Mr. Simpson, would you like to sign out?
Not familiar with.
To speak tonight?
Don't know where the headlines are.
Okay.
That's true.
This is a time and place for a hearing in front of the Idaho Water Resource Board regarding proposed changes to the state water plan and to the ESBA camp. Purpose of this meeting is to accept public comments on the proposed changes. The plan is that we will accept comments both orally and in writing. There's a little piece in the back that'll tell you how you can submit comments by email through written testimony or even an online dashboard. We have three people signed up to testify tonight, so we will begin testimony in shortly. What we want everybody to know is that the purpose of this hearing and the purpose of gathering public comment is for you all to tell us what, for the public to tell the board, what they think about the proposed changes. These changes are not set in stone. We will review the comments and we will then, at a subsequent board meeting, make a determination of what kind of changes to submit to the legislature. And the legislature has final approval of any changes that we will make to the state water plan. We will begin the program with a brief presentation from Neely Miller. Neely has worked on the proposed changes and he will give a short explanation of what the changes are and reasons for the changes, which as you all know stem from a direction from the legislature regarding recharge goals in the state water plan. So with that, I will turn this over to Neely Miller for his brief summary and then we will then turn to public comment. Neely?
Thank you, Board Member Barker. As you indicated, I'll begin with this brief presentation on what the process is for submitting comments and then highlight those changes. The reason the board is updating these policies is because the legislature in 2025 passed SCR 110. It expresses legislative support for the settlement agreement between the members of the Surface Water Coalition, Groundwater District, and Groundwater Districts along the ESBA. It also expresses support for increasing the aquifer recharge goal from 250,000 acre feet to 350,000 acre feet. Here's the exact language from SCR 110. I'm just going to jump to the be it further resolved that the legislature supports the Idaho Water Resource Board revising state water plans 4B, 4D, 4E, and the ESBA camp to establish a state-funded ESBA managed recharge goal of 350,000 acre feet on an average annual basis. Here's the schedule. As you can see, we've already had a, we've released the changes for public comment on July 11th. We had a public meeting in Idaho Falls on July 23rd. Tonight is the public meeting in Twin Falls. During the months of October and November, we will schedule some additional meetings to discuss the comments that are submitted and to discuss what comments will be finalized. And then the goal here is to present these final changes to the legislature on January 1. And just briefly, the State Water Agency shall have the power to formulate and implement a state water plan for optimum development of water resources in the public interest. That's Article 15, Section 7 of the Idaho Constitution. Idaho Code, Chapter 42, Section 1734A. The board shall, subject to legislative approval, progressively formulate, adopt, and implement comprehensive state water plan for conservation, development, management, and optimum use of all unappropriated water resources and waterways of the state in the public interest. So the first objectives were established in '74, policies in '76, then there's been a number of revisions here. The first, last full revision was in 2012, and in 2016, the board added a sustainability policy. So the proposed changes will be adopted by the board this winter before submitting to the legislature, and those changes shall become effective unless amended or rejected by law. And again, agencies are required to exercise their duties in a manner consistent with this plan. Here's the sections of the state water plan. As you'll know, SCR called out the Snake River Basin policies, and so those are the ones we'll be talking about today. And again, Board Member Barker talked about the ways to submit public comment. I will put this back up maybe during the testimony portion of this, but you see you can submit comments via email, through normal mail, through testimony at public hearings. And then for more information, there's this web, there's the state water plan website which you can review, and that, there is a link there to all the proposed changes to both the state water plan and the ESBA camp. Now briefly, I will switch to the changes, the proposed changes. Can you see the PDF of 4B on your screen now?
We can.
Hopefully that's big enough. Let me know if I need to zoom in.
Would be helpful to make it a little bigger.
We'll do that. This is for, Policy 4B is the Snake River Milner Zero Minimum Flow Policy. There's not a lot of significant changes, and I'm going to talk about these at a very high level. So keep that in mind. Here, we've just made some changes to reference that the camp was established and that it originally had a target of 150 to 250, that, well, the Phase 1 recharge was 100 to 175. That was subsequently raised to 250 on an average annual basis. And then I mentioned that the recharge goals of the ESBA camp have been achieved, and then there's language here talking about SCR 110 where the legislature recognized that the ESBA groundwater levels reach gains and spring discharges increased from 2015 to 2020, but have since declined to near 15 levels despite considerable groundwater conservation and managed aquifer recharge. SCR 110 directed the board to establish a new goal of 350,000 acre feet on an average annual basis. Yeah, this will be based on a 15-year rolling average, and it's to be understood that the state-sponsored 350,000 acre feet goal may require development of additional managed recharge infrastructure and recognize that, given the variability of water supply, this may be developed over time. Moving on, that's the bulk of the changes to this policy. You can see they did edit, we did propose some edits to the milestones because those have been completed or have been changed. And then a state-sponsored aquifer recharge program, mentioning the 350,000 goal, that new goal with the 15-year rolling average. Moving on to Policy 4D, the conjunctive management of the ESBA and the Snake River. There are a few changes here. One small change here in this first paragraph, just mentioning that small changes in aquifer storage can have significant impacts on the Snake River. Then here, there was some reference, a language to spring flows, and we have updated those numbers so that currently flows in the, in the thousand springs reach in 2024 are about 4,500 CFS, a decline of over 30% since the previous measurement. Moving on, can see here, just adding the 350,000 acre feet, referencing that the goal of the camp was to do a 600,000 acre foot aquifer budget change. And then mentioning that the initial goals of the recharge have been achieved and that there's this new goal as directed by SCR 110, and that it will be 350,000 acre feet. It may take some additional time, given the variability of water supply. Moving down, there's just a few more changes here. Again, just capturing here in the implementation strategies, the new goal for recharge on the 15-year rolling average. And now the last section is Policy 4E. This is Snake River Basin New Storage. And here, the first section of this is the ESBA Camp Managed Recharge Pilot Program. They're just, the proposed changes include language to indicate that the board has completed that pilot program. The next section is Surface Water Projects. Unfortunately, in the previous version, there was, the 2012 version, there was a duplicate language here. This was the first paragraph of this section, so staff is proposing to eliminate that duplicative language. The Lower Boise River Innen Feasibility Study. Here, the board has, and staff have added some language to this section, and it's to help address future water needs in the Treasure Valley and southwest Idaho. The board has partnered with the Bureau of Reclamation to investigate and undertake a project to raise Anderson Ranch Dam six feet that should be completed by 2031, and this would provide additional 29,000 acre feet. Moving on, implementation strategies. There's a addition of some, well, the elimination of the strategy to meet the original goal because the new goal is, there was a new goal set. And then there was an expanded state-sponsored managed recharge capacity to allow for opportunistic capture of flood flows. And then continue partnership with the Bureau of Reclamation on Anderson Dam raise. And then on the milestones, one of the new milestones is increased managed aquifer recharge capacity, and then the completion of Anderson Ranch Dam raise. That's the extent of the changes proposed to date for the state water plan Snake River policies. As you'll recall, SCR 110 also mentions the ESBA camp. Staff has reviewed the ESBA camp, and there is only one small section that references the recharge goal of 250,000 acre feet. That is in Section 3.1, the long-term hydrologic goal. Here you can see aquifer recharge. It previously referenced the 150 to 250. Staff has made the noted change to 350 there. And then lastly, it's the table associated with that section. Again, the goal is to mix and match strategies to get a 600,000 acre foot long-term aquifer budget change. These were the goals that were identified. What SCR 110 does and what the board is doing here is just changing that managed aquifer recharge goal from 250 to 350, but not, not changing the total budget change. And that is the extent of the changes in the ESBA camp. So with that, Board Member Barker, I would stand for any questions from you before you proceed with the hearing.
No, Mr. Miller, we're very happy with your presentation, and we will now proceed to the hearing. Public testimony will be taken. I am the hearing officer on behalf of the Water Resource Board in this public hearing. We will, we have three people signed up, so I'm not going to put a hard time limit on everyone, but please be respectful of the time of everyone here. Please make your remarks respectful for other folks. And also please confine your remarks to the topics that are addressed in the proposed changes. State Water Plan is an enormous document. We're not proposing to address anything other than what the legislature directed us to address in these sections, and so if you would, please confine your remarks to those sections of the state water plan and the ESBA camp. We appreciate it. The first commenter, Travis Thompson, if you would go up to the podium, Mr. Thompson, and if you would identify yourself and who you are speaking on behalf today.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. My name is Travis Thompson. I'm an attorney here in Twin Falls with Parsons Bailey &amp; Lumber. Our firm represents B D, Burley, Milner, and Minidoka Irrigation Districts. American Falls Reservoir District Number 2, and Northside Falls County. Going to give a few comments here on your behalf tonight. Look back in the record, Thomas Manko is the only person to testify in Twin Falls back in 2012, so I guess we'll do a little better tonight at 3:00. We intend to submit written comments to the board on these points, but I just wanted to give you an overview of what we intend to submit and maybe our focus. Our clients are interested primarily in the Policy 4E, the Snake River Basin Conjunctive Management of the Aquifer River. But this is the board's first time to make changes to these policies for the, 4B and the ESBA camp since 2012, with that addition in 2016 on the sustainability policy. And we think there have been some important administrative developments concerning the aquifer since that time that the board should highlight and acknowledge in the state water plan and camp going forward. First, the director designated the ESBA as a groundwater management area back in 2016. He found the aquifer was approaching a critical state back then, recognized continued water delivery calls, annual injury findings, and the fact that certain senior water rights are not being satisfied. Fast forward to 2022, the directory issued the amended Snake River Basin moratorium in October of that year. That order was finalized in July of 2024. That moratorium in general just prohibits new consumptive use of water rights without mitigation in the area. And then this year, the director has issued orders and has held public hearings on the expansion of the area common groundwater supply, bringing in certain tributary basins into administration. So I think those factors kind of lend to, I guess, hopefully describing that Policy 4E a little broader than what it is now. And then Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 110, while you're here, while you're here in the first place, the legislature requested the board to increase the aquifer's recharge to 350,000 acre feet on average annual basis, and that's highlighted in the comments. We appreciate that. However, that resolution specifically states that this additional recharge is needed to, quote, "improve reach gains to the Snake River between Blackfoot and Minidoka Dam, protect existing surface water and groundwater rights, and minimize harm to Idaho's economy and rates of our supply shortages." Resolution also specifically called out the 2024 stipulated mitigation plan between our clients and my groundwater districts. Those are flash to you. So in general, I think our comments will focus on encouraging the board to add references in that section about the importance of conjunctive management of the aquifer and the river above Milner, in particular, the purpose of reach gains, maintaining and increasing those in the Blackfoot-Minidoka Reach. That reach supplies natural flow for most of the irrigation season, per senior water rights below Blackfoot. Critically, it also helps fill America Falls in the non-irrigation season. That contribution to fill during the non-irrigation season is important for reservoir fill of the entire upper Snake River basin above Milner. Again, the existing language in the state water plan focuses on the thousand springs reach, which is critical for the board's maintenance of the swamp falls' minimums, but we think it can be expanded to add, highlight the connection between the river and the aquifer above. Again, we think that's needed because of the legislature's request to increase recharge and focus on that, which the board is doing. We appreciate it. Everything the board's done, the programs that have been implemented, heavy recharge that has been undertaken the last 10 years, particularly above. So those are kind of a highlight of our written comments, but we will submit those and suggest some proposed language to include, but if you guys have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. One thing to note is those comments are due by the end of the month, so.
Yes.
The opportunity to read those and incorporate those thoughts into the final language look like. And then question for you is, you had mentioned the discussion of the area or the expansion of the area common groundwater supply. Is that a topic that's addressed in the state water plan right now? Not the expansion of the area common groundwater supply? Or is it completely missing?
I don't know if it is missing. I just know the description of the aquifer. I don't know if it's specifically defined.
Would you, would you address that point in your comments for us?
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Brian Murdock, if you approach the podium, please identify yourself and who are you speaking on behalf of?
My name is Brian Murdock, as the board is getting way too familiar with. I'm representing Murdoch Farms. I'm a farmer from Bayonne County, Idaho. Background, as far as what you are discussing, I was involved in what I call the pre-camp process. That was before the camp process got formally kicked over and kicked started, I would say. This was one of my earlier things in which involved me in water stuff. So I remember discussing a lot of this here in Twin Falls, discussing all these recharge things. Another thing that I would like to point out is I was very active, probably best way of saying it, as a water advocate in this year's Senate session, or legislative session, which I, for lack of a better way of explaining it, was a very loud cheerleader for this proposal, which I was very happy to see this resolution get passed with the consent that it got passed with. Very, very much encouraged that our legislature was starting to pay attention to what was going on at the water world, on fights of the bank. So I am in support of the changes that have been made in as far as the 350,000 reset or increase. I probably have just a few questions as far as some of the language in here. One of them being, I noted that in your first initial paragraph on the first page of the bottom, it says the state-sponsored 350,000 acre feet of the average annual basis will be based on a 15-year rolling average. But that was a very smart move on your behalf, the aspect that I would have killed for a 15-year rolling average in our last agreement, which somehow never made it. So probably applaud that. I'm a little nervous that 15 years is maybe long. I don't know whether or not there will be those that feel like that needs to be shortened, but as we were discussing earlier today, sometimes water lags, and so the 15 years is probably something that I support. Other question that I had was on the third page of the document, which it says in the very top paragraph, it says, "Small changes in aquifer storage can have significant impacts on the Snake River." I wonder why that language was added in there. That's the person who's had a bullseye on his back. I know that I don't necessarily care for that language and the aspect that it adds Probably other than that, the only thing that I was made to go just a little off script is back in your 4E section, which you talk about new storages. Right below where you added to help address the future needs of the Treasure Valley, talk about the Anderson Ranch Dam, which I support, think that is a good project. There's another project there that I feel like ought to be encouraged, and that is the Weezer Gap or Weezer-Galloway Gap. Now, I know that's not part of this because that's not part of the scope of this. It's why it's been bothering everybody who's ever came up here today. Same fly. But anyway, we need to look at that. I don't know whether or not that could be added in this because it's out of this Snake River Basin. This is not what the legislature was talking about, but there were studies done there and added in that section, but I guess I'm not aware of what they've all been. But I guess all I'd like to say is, as the farmer who this has affected the most, as I was discussing earlier, my farm is reduced in the amount of water that I can farm with significantly. It is having impacts on my farm, even though my farm at this point, time has rented out to another farm. He is having to deal with what my farm has. So I am in support of this. My only other fear is that the water board becomes a competitor to the groundwater districts in purchasing water, because therefore, if you guys about your amount of what you're trying to get to, we are also trying to get as much water as we can for recharge. So that's another fear I have. I'm trying to think a way to address that in this document, but I wanted to add my support that I appreciate you with this, and I am in support. Thanks, you and questions?
Mr. Murdock, yes, one question on the Weezer-Galloway project.
Yes.
If you have some suggestions, since we are looking at 4E, if you have some language suggestions you want to give us later in the writing, then about what we should do differently than what's already there, please feel free to include us. in writing, then about what we should do differently than what's already there, uh, please feel free to include that.
The only question, Chairman, well, Chairman Barker, is that correct?
Hearing Officer.
Hearing, hearing Officer Barker. The question that I have is, as you look at the language of what was given to you by the Senate Concurrent Resolution one-ten, uh, in which it says, whereas the E S P A managed recharge goal is documented in the state water plan policies and the E S P A, you know, it says that, and then later on, it says that you should review and revise these sections. It says, "Being further resolved," this is the last part, part or paragraph, uh, that this Idaho Water Resource Board revised state water plan policies. Can we add, even though four E is in that, is that Weezer Gap allowable?
Yeah, so, Mr., yeah, Mr. Murdock, what I was suggesting is if you have some language that you think we should put in here addressing what we should be looking at in the Weezer Galloway project, please submit that in writing to us before the end of the month.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Uh, the last, uh, person signed up is Linda Lemon. Miss Lemon, would you approach the podium, identify yourself, and, uh, tell us who you are speaking on behalf of?
Name is Linda Lemon from the Hagerman Valley, uh, representing our family and family farm. And farming in the Hagerman Valley since before Idaho became a state. We're raising fish, cattle, crops, seeing spring water, well water, and surface water. As a former spring water representative on the camp, I mentioned this to Brian earlier, one of the, at one of the meetings I had mentioned, two hundred and fifty thousand acre feet of recharge isn't enough. And Hal Anderson angrily, maybe more out of discouraged than anything said, "That's all we can do, can't do anymore." So I am encouraged that you are raising your goal to three hundred and fifty thousand, and when I say that's not enough, I hope you're not going to grab the table and say, "That's all we can do," but rather, "That's what we can do right now, and we will continue looking for more opportunities to increase recharge in the future." One of the things I am discouraged about is in your update on the spring discount declines from twenty percent to now thirty percent. As a spring user at the end of the ditch, that is very discouraging. Um, so I, I realize that you have been directed to do more recharge, an additional hundred thousand acre feet. So my question is, what is the purpose? Is it all targeted for the Blackfoot area? Do you have specific sites you are looking at? Who, who is really your target beneficiary? Because as a spring user, I would like you to see, like, to see you use some of that hundred thousand acre feet for springs and to increase those. Your presentation today showed declines, continuing declines, yes, some of those may be slowing, but at thirty percent, I can tell you there are springs that are thriving. And you have recharge sites such as the Chouchou site, which can offer more benefit to the springs in the Hagerman thousands of springs in each area than perhaps you've been using for recent. So while I support your changes, I would like to hope that you will target that site as part of your hundred thousand increase.
Thank you for your comments, Miss Lemon. I will say that, uh, board has been working very hard over the last dozen years on trying to expand the system. It's, takes time, it takes money, and it takes finding the appropriate hydrologic places to put it. I don't think for the purposes of this, of the state water plan that we should identify specific locations where we would target specific recharge sites, but we do have a program of recharge. And if you have some ideas of where we should be doing recharge, turn around and look at this gentleman behind you in the blue shirt, and he will be more than happy to discuss in great detail what, where you think would be a good place to target additional recharge. Because we appreciate people on the ground know what's going on a lot better than people sitting in this, in these chairs and on this, this conference. So please help us find the right places to do recharge.
Well, and I hope that the directive you've been given on a hundred thousand acre feet can do that. You have maybe the background for that directive, and you've been given some target for that. Hopefully that's enough to do more than just that, because there's still an ongoing need.
Thank you for your comments, and, uh, if you have anything you would like to, uh, share with us in writing, please do so before the end of the month, so we can incorporate that into our evaluation of the final changes. Thank you for your time. Uh, anyone else in the audience care to comment? Uh, hearing, no further volunteers? Meeting adjourned? Thank you all for coming.